Good evening. Welcome to a regular session of Athens City Council. It is Monday, July 16, 2012, 7:30 we're starting on time. Our first order of business is to establish a quorum. We have six members of council here, so that will serve as a quorum. Second issue is disposition of two sets of minutes. One is the minutes from the special session of council held on June 27, 2012. The other is a regular session of council held July 2, 2012. Do I have a motion to accept these minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of accepting these sets of minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We have accepted these two sets of minutes. I don't have any communications, Mayor Wile.
Just a few. I missed most of the fun. I was out and you were playing mayor at the time, so I hope you weren't too traumatized.
Let me just say right now, Ron Lucas handled everything great.
Okay. Well, thanks to all the staff and, you know, the workers out there who cut the trees, got everybody away from the power lines, whether they're on or not. But the fact is, there were a lot of things down, as you probably know. I was here to -- I left Sunday morning, and therefore I saw a little bit of it on Saturday when I was driving around, but even then I realized after a while that I was just getting in the way, especially with all the lights out and, you know, just part of the traffic problem. But again, I have to thank the staff, as you say, Ron Lucas in particular, but actually members of the water, the sewer, as well as streets. They all did a lot of work keeping the pipes going and the water going as best possible. I know some of the other water systems actually ran out, if you read the papers. So I missed most of the fun. On other notes, of course, we -- there was a solid waste policy committee meeting last week. The EPA has accepted the plan with the condition that we, the solid waste district draw up a -- do a feasibility study for a materials recovery facility, or MRF. They have a year to do that, so they're going to start that rolling and look at the feasibility of actually creating one or not. Also that I'll -- we'll let you know that we're having a planning commission meeting this Wednesday, and it will be one case for 152 and 154 Mill Street. It's Title 41. And after that, I'm just still playing catch-up, so. And a lot of overtime is dealt with, as you know, spent out, so. Community Center was open for cooling, as you know, and I think it had lots of people showing up and jumping in the pool.
Auditor Kathy Hep?
No report.
Log collector Patrick Lane?
No report.
Reports and communications from other elected officials. Anything?
That's us. That's you?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a brief reminder to the community that this weekend, we're celebrating Boogie on the Bricks, so my understanding is that Court Street will be closed for that event. Likewise, there's a website, boogieonthebricks.com, as is spelled or pronounced all the same, boogieonthebricks.com. My understanding from Member Ghazni was that they're still looking for volunteers to assist in the event. Is that correct?
I believe so, yeah.
So for the community members out there that are interested in helping out or volunteering, please contact the appropriate sources on the site. Thank you.
Anything else from council members? Not right now? Okay, so we'll proceed with ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 8312, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into contract with Perfection Group, Inc., for energy-saving lighting improvements to city facilities and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Ghazni.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move that we consider this ordinance under suspension if council rules.
Second.
And the reason for the suspension is that the work that's outlined in here, there are currently some rebates to the city available until the end of August, and so if we get this work underway by then, we will be able to save quite a bit of money on the project.
Okay. Did we -- okay, so we need to suspend the rules. All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 8312 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Thank you. And this is part of a comprehensive look at city facilities and looking for ways we can cut our energy use and reduce costs at the same time. And this is simply for the lighting part. We've talked about this in committee quite a bit. This would improve lighting, upgrade lighting to more efficient equipment at -- in most buildings in the city. I'll just read through them briefly. The city hall would be a big one, as well as the law administration building, both fire stations, the water treatment plant, Division of Engineering and Public Works, Arts West, the Public Works Annex, Athens Bus Garage, City Laboratory, the municipal court, the city pool facility, as well as the Parks and Rec Maintenance Garage. The total amount of work that would be completed would be a little over $112,000, $112,197. And that would be taken out of existing funds that the city has in various different departments that use those facilities. And I'll, of course, let the finance committee members speak to this if they have anything to add to that.
Just that, you know, we did look at it. The council members discussed it in committee last week, and that there will be a savings initially with the rebate of about $23,000 from AEP, so substantially reduces the cost for us, and then we'll start seeing savings during the year, too. And we'll be tracking this.
The Perfection Group, we have worked with on other projects, and we anticipate working with them on further projects in the city, but this one is just regarding the lighting in these buildings. All those in favor of ordinance 8312?
I didn't make the motion yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You read my mind. I would like to move adoption of ordinance 8312.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor of ordinance 8312 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This ordinance is passed, and so we can give direction to the Perfection Group to begin work as soon as possible. Ordinance 8412, an ordinance banning parking and closing that portion of Court Street from Mulberry to Carpenter on October 27 and 28, 2012, in anticipation of a large number of people converging on downtown Athens, parentheses, Halloween weekend. Introduced by Councilmember Ghazni.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance, as well as the following three ordinances, deal with our cultural heritage of the Halloween festivities in Athens. The first one is to suspend parking, and I'll just speak briefly on all of them and then just have you read them unless anyone has questions. So it's simply to close the street and suspend parking. The second one, which is 8512, establishes a glass-free drinking container zone to improve the, you know, help with the safety of the event. 8612, suspends the vending ordinances in the city so that we can allow certain limited vending for Halloween weekend. And the last one, suspends the noise ordinance so that we are within our own regulations when we have the live music outside. Just one more note is that, as every year, this is done in conjunction with the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee, who helps organize and make sure that event goes as smooth as we can expect.
Questions or comments?
I did run into John Zedh-Homberg just today, and he said he's ready to go and start the conversation up, so he's involved. Mr. Halloween.
Mr. Halloween.
Auditor Hep, could you have your hand up? No? Okay. I'm just gonna, as Member Ghazni indicated, I'm just gonna read the remaining ordinances quickly, and we'll move on from there. Ordinance 8512, an ordinance establishing a glass-free drinking container zone on Court Street and adjoining sidewalks between Union and State on October 27 and 28, 2012 Halloween weekend. Ordinance 8612, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting, to allow vending in a designated area on October 27 and 28, 2012 Halloween weekend. Ordinance 8712, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 13.04.10, unnecessary noise in the downtown area on October 27 and 28, 2012 Halloween We'll move on to other ordinances. Ordinance 8812, an ordinance amending ordinance 3412, granting a revocable license to Horizon Telecom, Inc., for use of a portion of the city right-of-way to provide a utility corridor to service a new substation, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Okay, I found it here. This is an ordinance that will, as you say, grant a revocable license to Horizon Telecom for their fiber optic cable.
I understand that we should -- we need to suspend this.
Okay.
Suspend the rule.
Okay. Sorry for being confused here, but, all right. I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 8812 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended.
Okay. In this case, we move for adoption.
Second.
Second. Okay. All those in favor of ordinance 8812 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been accepted. And so we'll move on to ordinance 8912, an ordinance amending the 2012 appropriation ordinance, introduced by Councilmember Nysler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we -- request that we consider this under suspension of the rules.
Second?
Second.
And the purpose for this being that we will be needing to pay the money due to HAPCAP for the city cost-share portion of the Athens transit, and that needs to be paid in August.
All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 8912 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 8912.
Second.
And this particular ordinance is an appropriation, and it amends our unappropriated balance with the following sum: $20,000 to the Transportation Fund, 714, Transaction Code 300. And what this does is covers the city's match through August for the Athens transit system. And you might remember that this year is a little bit different year, in that formerly the Athens transit system had been under the direct management of the city of Athens. And as we have worked with HAPCAP organization after the first quarter of this year, the remaining three quarters have been that we've been working with HAPCAP, so we need to make these periodic transfers for the expenses. There's $20,000 now. We're anticipating that there may be an additional $40,000, and we will address that appropriation in September when we have the estimate for the rest of the expenses for the year.
Member Nysler, quickly, could you just remind us what a HAPCAP is?
I'm sorry. Hawking Athens Perry Community Action Agency. And they are the ones that manage Go Bus, and they also manage the Hawking Transit System as well.
Thank you.
Mayor Wile?
A couple things. Yes, this, we've been putting money always into the bus system, and this is, now that they're managing it and the process is pretty much a pass-through, this is our contribution to it. I would also point out, looking at the ordinance 9812, I think there's a typo. It says 714 Fund, Transportation Fund 714. It's actually 214, I believe, just so you guys know.
Thank you.
Probably is my scribbling, I think.
Thank you. That's a help to have the right account number, believe me.
What was your?
It's -- Transportation Fund is 214, not 714.
Yeah.
Thank you.
With that correction, changing Transportation Fund to 214 rather than 714, all those in favor of accepting ordinance 8912 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been accepted. Ordinance 9012, an ordinance appointing an assessment equalization board relative to replacement of a portion of the existing sidewalk and curbs deemed in poor condition and complete drainage improvements as part of the Grosvenor Slip Project, number 238, and the North Court Area Infrastructure Project, Project Number 259, fixing the time and place for such a board to hear objections to assessments and declaring an emergency, introduced again by Councilmember Nysler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I request that we consider this ordinance under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The purpose being that there is a meeting tentatively scheduled at this point for August 27, so we need to pass the ordinance before the meeting occurs or in time for it to occur.
Okay. All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 9012 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Nysler?
Thank you. I move for adoption of ordinance 9012.
Second.
And this particular ordinance is a part of our process for sidewalk assessments within the city limits of Athens. Property owners are responsible for keeping sidewalks in safe repair. As we work on the North Court Street and Grosvenor and Morris Avenue improvements, at the time that we're doing the water and curb and utility improvements and the Grosvenor Slip, we're also taking that time to coordinate sidewalk repairs. There have been several people who have filed objections to the assessments, and as part of our process then, we appoint an equalization assessment board, and we have three citizens who have agreed to serve on that board, and we will be scheduling the meeting then for August 27 for them to review the cases of the property owners who are objecting.
Mayor?
This is a review board as an appeals for the assessment, as impartial citizens who do it for service, good service of the city. I'm glad you got your three. I know that was a little bit of a rush to do that. But again, this is how we evaluate. It's part of the Ohio Revised Code, a process of assessing streets and sidewalks, and it's cited in the OAT, so that particular occasion.
All those in favor of accepting ordinance 9012 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been accepted. And then we'll move on. We have a resolution for one reading. Resolution 0812, a resolution requesting the state legislature to implement changes in state law to enact uniform tax provisions, introduced by all council members. Auditor Hep, do you want to talk about that?
Sure. I had passed out information to council. I don't know if anybody has any questions about anything. I just wanted to let council know that our tax administrator, Tina, and her assistant, Chris, were at the OML Tax Seminar last week, and there was a lot of discussion about this. Athens was recognized for passing this because I think we're in a different area of the state than where this started and has been passed. Seven entities, including Dayton and Troy, have passed it. Vandelia is planning to pass this tonight. It was very well received. They had Representative Beck at the conference, and so I think it's a really good idea. As I said, we have support even from the, you know, state representatives who are in favor of the uniformity and possibly centralization of the income tax. So I think, I think this is just a really good thing. I appreciate council support in this. One other thing I might add is I did mention that we don't really have hard facts for the Section 125 plans, but we do still believe that that is where the money is. The figures that Tina used in her report were what we got from a tax-paying account several years ago when we were no longer able to tax those monies. And so it's a little bit hard to tell right now exactly how much money that will come in now. That was in probably 2005 when that stopped. So in the last seven years, it does include things like parking, daycare, and flexible spending plans that people might have. And so she has been trying to do some research and called some businesses and employers around town, and is waiting for information to come back. So if anybody wants more information on that down the line, we'll let you know, but there's just no way that we can't benefit by that becoming taxable again, because we're not taxing any of that money now and haven't been. And there's quite a bit of that out there. We just don't know exactly how much.
Comments or questions from council members?
Kathy, I would just say I appreciate your time. You've been filling us in and giving us information now for several months and keeping us really up to date, and I really do appreciate that.
I appreciate your support, and I have to give most of the credit to our tax administrator, who is absolutely keeping up on this and attending meetings and reading, and it's all pretty interesting, and it's just, you know, a way to help the city of Athens. This is our main source of revenue. Thanks.
Would you, would you also argue that, on a simple note, this is advocating to keep local rule local?
Yes. Yes. That was one of the big issues when this first came up, is the issue of home rule and that we're still allowed to do this. And I think that the tax administrators from all over the state have been coming together and have been pretty cooperative in the idea of uniformity. You know, we all understand that there are businesses that operate in several jurisdictions, and uniformity is good. However, you know, I don't agree with the centralization, and we still do, because part of the uniformity they've talked about is a single tax rate. Well, they're all over the place in the state. As you know, a quarter or a tenth of a percent of income tax brings in a lot of money, so there's a lot of variations throughout the state that, depending on where you are, you might just need that extra little bit, or maybe more compared to other entities in the bigger cities. So, yeah, the tenth of a percent that we put on for the tax, our street rehab, or we council put on a year ago, brought in about $600,000, at least that. We're not through collecting it from the end of last year. We're still collecting a little bit into this year. So that's a small percentage, and we're a small city, and so that's a lot of money. And that would probably be more like 6 million in Dayton, and so, you know, or Cleveland, something like that. So, yes, it's important that home rule is still taken into account for the tax collection.
Mayor Wile, could you start to say something?
No.
No?
She said it all.
Anybody else? All in favor of this? Did we not have a motion yet?
May I make a motion to approve Resolution 812?
And all those in favor of Resolution 812 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. It's done. Resolution is accepted.
I seconded that if you didn't catch that.
And we do have announcements in other business. This, just my quick announcement, is this is the last regular session before our August break. Next week, we will have at least one committee meeting and probably a special session for next Monday. So please plan, members, plan on being here and then enjoying the August break. Yes?
Thank you. Under announcements, I will acknowledge that I was in communications earlier today with Public Works Director Stone about a meeting this week pertaining to the waterline projects. And so I believe he and Member Nysler and I, perhaps Member Ghazni as well, will be meeting at 1:15 at his office on Wednesday regarding the waterline efforts.
Which may well lead to the special session.
Correct. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mayor Wile?
If there's a special session, I wouldn't mind if there's an executive session to piggyback on that for a possible land acquisition, at least for the discussion of it.
Yes.
Likely finance and personnel.
I believe we think that we need. Okay. So, any other announcements?
If there are not here. Planning? Planning?
Unless we have, unless we have pending legislation, we are suggesting, we're suggesting that we wait till August, I mean September, when everybody's back. And it will be fresher in everybody's mind. Okay. Opportunities for citizens to speak on legislative items and services not covered on the agenda. I think we have several people who would like to speak to us. Please come up to the podium, give us your name, and there should be a piece of paper there. Sign in. You have three minutes to speak. Time doesn't start until you get all signed in. The light will be green. When it goes red, you have 20, 30 seconds left. And then the light, the light should start blinking here momentarily.
Okay.
Somebody will come running out.
Okay. I'm not going to be long. My name is Mary Costello, and I live at 24 Northwood Drive. I'm a city resident, excuse me, and I'm here because of my extreme frustration with the way AEP dealt with this recent power outage with regard, at least, to pockets of residences within the city. I live on Northwood Drive. I lost power on the 29th, just like everybody else did, and on July 2, my neighborhood was restored, but I was not. And my immediate neighborhood, neighbor at 22 also was not, as were 10 and 12. 10 and 12 were a different reason, but also a very idiosyncratic, specific thing. I was very distressed that power to a neighborhood would be restored, and there'd be no effort to investigate the neighborhood, to be sure that everyone was restored. It took me a while to find out why I didn't have power, and it turns out there was a line down at 36 Briarwood, which provides me with power. The resident there called AEP, and she did what they said, had the neighbors' home reattach the line. Anyway, she took care of everything that they said to do, and still, power was not restored. I heard on the radio, if you don't have power and your neighbors have power, AEP says, call this number. So I did, repeatedly. It made no difference. I thought they cared, but they apparently couldn't deal with it. I called more, starting on Friday, a whole week, you know, into this, without power. And by the way, my neighborhood lost it again on Wednesday and was restored again on Friday, so, you know, they were restored twice, and I had none. Anyway, I have, two of the people on the line are in their mid to late 80s. When I heard that three Licking County residents died, I called desperate to say, there are three, there are two people who are quite elderly on this line. Something needs to be done. This was Friday. This is a whole week into it. The whole time, anybody I talked to said estimated time is July 6. Didn't come back on a July 6, July 7. Oh, yeah, on the 7th I called, and they said no estimated time of restoration. It finally came on Sunday afternoon at 4 o'clock, and the resident at 36 Briarwood said it took them 30 minutes to attach the line. I just feel that as a city resident, I would, I would like to have some, I guess I would appreciate it if city council would make a strong statement to AEP and PUCO about the treatment of residents during this outage.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Thank you, Mr. Stone.
My name is Steve Grimes. I'm a resident of twenty Northwood, and I'm here also to address you on AEP, but on a slightly different aspect of the problem. In October, I had a problem in the backyard of where I live. A tree obviously had been damaged, a hundred-foot tree leaning over a power line, and it was clearly very dangerous and likely to take out power. So I called AEP. They sent somebody from a contractor called Asplund, which I think does the tree work, and he inspected it and agreed with my judgment that this hundred-foot tree was very, very likely to fall soon on a power line. The problem was, because his estimate was it was only going to take out two homes, that it was going to be put on such a low priority that they would certainly not get to it for three to four months. And so his recommendation was, if you don't want to lose power, you better call a contractor yourself. So I did call a contractor. I did spend $1,100 to save my power and the power of a neighbor, but it seems to me that the fact that someone from their contractor could tell me that this tree was very likely to fall, but that they were so far behind, they were not going to do anything about it, probably says a lot about what happened as a consequence of the storm. It seems to me like the PUCO should take steps to make them justify the level that they are spending to keep these tree, dangerous tree situations from becoming a crisis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Bay in one ten Columbia Avenue. I'm here this evening representing only myself, not always even can do that, but I'm also a stockholder in AEP. I'm very concerned about the conditions that AEP put us through during this last event. I'm not sure, I mean, I've heard it called the soup or whatever, but it's, winds have reached that speed before in this town. What I'm more concerned about is what I read in the Columbus paper. I think there's some management decisions, similar to what Steve talked about, that have played into this. We had 2,000 jobs lost from this area as a consequence of this. There used to be guys who came out and fixed them. Now it's a contract. It's an Asplund. I'm grateful to have the power on. Like everyone else, I lost my refrigerator, then I lost my freezer. I'm mostly a vegetarian, so it didn't matter as much as it could have, but I have two big concerns, and I hope you guys will think about doing something about them. The first one is the lack of information. When you're sitting in the dark, in the heat, by yourself, it was really a very challenging event. And somebody said, well, turn on one, two, three station. You know, and you want to hear these goofuses babbling about what's going on. They don't know any more than I do, but they don't, they feel free to call in. I was happy to have my landline. So I don't know how you could do it, certainly not online, and maybe some kiosks somewhere, if you ever had it, where we could actually know what is going on, because a lot of people don't have a landline anymore. The other thing I'm extremely concerned about is the elderly. Some elderly were fresh out of nursing homes, and they had, and people called me because they didn't know I was not still on council. I said, sorry, I have no power. I can't do anything for you, but I did call, and I got ahold of Paula, and she talked to the powers that be. But we have a lot of elderly on Columbia Avenue. There are approximately four or five thousand people that were out for a long period of time. I mean elderly, twenty years older than I am, many of them. And so, I mean, it's a serious situation for them. What about the people who are sick, who need something more than just a refrigerator running with a, with a generator? But in the past, council took care of downtown. We sort of embarrassed them, if you remember. We also took care of East State Street. That works pretty well. And I think that what we would, what I would like to ask is to have them rationalize. And rationalize means stop those, all the lines, whether it's your area, Jeff, or my area, it's down the hill, in the bottom of, in the gullies kind of line system, which is very good from a financial point of view, is really bad from a point of view of service. So they're old CNSOE materials, and we're still on that system. That was the problem downtown. That was the problem on East State, and that is the problem here. We're still dealing with an archaic system, houses built in the thirties serviced by, we did it for gas, let's try it for electric. Ask them to do it. Embarrass them. It was pathetic, what they did to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Scott needs to be slapped in there or something.
Law Director. Can we do a resolution with a letter like next week?
No, one reading resolution.
So we'll put together, ask Ms. Walker to, you will be here?
And the public utilities.
On Monday, okay. We'll put this together, and she'll be here on Monday to type it.
And to the Public Utilities Commission.
Yes, yes. So it gets both, both places. From us, and then expressing our concerns for our citizens, that we know there are many more than you who weren't able to come tonight. But we'll try to speak for everybody, and we'll go a little bit further and see what we can do. Sir?
If you do write to the Utilities Commission, I know of two trees which are leaning over a phone line, and on Columbia, and should these trees take that line down, it would block Columbia. And for some reason, the call to the phone company hasn't done anything, so it isn't in this case just AEP. Right at the crest of the hill, once you go beyond Briarwood, there are two very tall trees, forty to fifty-foot trees, which are resting on the phone line. Yeah, since the twenty-ninth.
Okay. If anything else for council? We then will be adjourned at eight oh, let's say, eight oh one?
Seven.
Eight oh seven. I couldn't see the, I couldn't see the thing there.